Evening, welcome to the regular town board meeting for the town of Tuscon. Over the 10th. Call the meeting to order, join me in the fudge. The payment of bills. The general fund expended seventy-three, seventy-two thousand, three hundred and six dollars and eighty-eight cents. The highway, three hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-six cents. Water, thirteen thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty-three cents. Sewer, twenty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars and twenty-four cents. Capital Highway, one hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty-two cents. Capital Water, forty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-eight cents for a total of six hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-one cents. Jane and Kevin.
No problems.
No problems.
No problem. Yeah, part of the highway was one new truck that came in and also the culvert work that was done.
Well, what the highway? Also asphalt.
Oh, yeah. The motion to pay the bills is presented. So move second.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? I opposed. The. Division reports that we do not read here are posted online or will be posted online. We will jump forward to Jane, I believe, the Conservation Advisory Committee. You can start with that one.
Conservation Advisory Committee has not met because we're waiting for our contract. From the National Fish and Wildlife. They had asked for some revisions to our application, which I. Prepared, but we don't have a contract yet, so we won't meet this month either. And I spoke to Peter and he thought it'd be better to wait until we have our contract and then we know the direction that we're headed. So that's where that goes. We go on to.
Water and sure.
Water Sewer Committee met October 2nd at eight AM. We reviewed correspondence and for water, the discussion was well won. And the sewer pump were both affected by lightning. In addition to the generator there, so we're trying to have those repairs reimbursed by insurance.
Yes, we have not heard.
Okay. Well, two hasn't been used for real service for since the flooding in those six, but it's now being brought back in line. Since we had that problem with well one, it's important. We have three wells so that you know. A new meter was installed on well one and it appears to be more accurate than the old meter. Which is showing that we're having less water usage than we thought, so that's a good thing. Sewer. The remainder, remainder of the meeting was devoted to reviewing the possible scenarios regarding the future billing increases in the sewer. You might remember we had a representative from R cap a couple meetings ago, Becky. And Becky went over her work and the scenarios that she had prepared. And the committee agreed to raise the base rate eleven dollars and forty cents a quarter. And additionally bill eight dollars and eighty-eight cents per gallon of water. Per thousand, I'm sorry, per thousand.
We just saved you a lot of money.
I'm sorry. This option is chosen because the base rate reimburses. To approximately seventy-one percent of the costs of the sewer department to run the sewer department. And the remainder will be made from actual usage that everybody uses. And as determined by their water. Yeah. And that. It's the, this method of linking sewer with water usage is a successful, common practice in many communities. And we thank the efforts of our cap. And their in-depth report guiding us towards a just billing solution. They really are a wonderful resource for us.
On that, Jane, you didn't raise the base rate. It's just the base rate will be eleven forty. The base rate's eleven forty, it's not raised what the base rate is now to eleven forty.
No. No. I don't think so.
Well.
I, no, their base rate now is. All right, I'll check that. I don't think so.
Well, we'll know in the budget hearings.
Yeah, okay. Okay. On the grounds.
Yes.
So has anybody been to the bridge lately or the culvert? It's just about finished. Did they remove the temporary bridge?
No, it's almost done.
I saw them. Yeah. So it appears to be progressing as per timetable and is scheduled to be finished the first week of November. And it looks like they will. Water infrastructure project continues to be coordinated by Delaware Engineering. The playground project is ongoing, the mound for the small children has been ordered. We await a contract for our National Fish and Wildlife brand. To develop an open space and reparenting plan for the town of Tuscon. The UDC check of eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty cents. From our twenty-twenty-three project has been received. In addition, the UDC has awarded the town of Tuscon ten thousand dollars. To use towards our match for the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation ground. The building committee has met with Buck Mark, Morehead to develop a plan to reconfigure. Town hall space and public space. And I didn't have there, but also all the employees. Have submitted paperwork to Buck to, so that Buck can understand the necessary space needed by each employee. Okay.
Board have any questions for Jane? If not, I will open the floor to public comment before old business. I'll start here in the room. Yes, sir.
Need me up here?
Yes, please.
Okay. I'm Jim Powell, I live down in the flats and first I have two quick items. Number one, since we're getting close to the end of. Jane's. Membership in this board, I want to make sure before the end of the year, I got a chance to recognize everything she's done. She just demonstrated that, all the grants and so forth. Terrific. Tough, gotta be tough shoes to fill. The second item, speaking of grants, the. Construction on the playground that has become very controversial, there's a lot of people in the room that feel very strongly about that one way and the other. I, among them. I would. Most of what I hear in terms of criticisms of going forward has talked about the towns. Not stepping up in terms of supporting what has already been done over the last years. Either leaving jobs half-done or not following up on a long-term support of those projects. And I. I recognize. That and it's pretty hard to dispute that. I would like to offer the board an opportunity to demonstrate that it's going to be stepping up more. If we're gonna be have, gonna have something very large and expensive. Bigger than any other expansion that's been done in the playground in the flats. Obviously, the board has to be stepping up its support of these kinds of things long-term. Both with the town's commitment labor-wise and financially and so forth. Within a couple of hundred yards of the playground. Is an abandoned building. On Fourth Street, the old car barn. In February of two thousand and nineteen. Jim Crowley cited that as a violation, it's in a, it's, it's. A, it's falling down and that's what it was cited for. There's been fence put around it, it has not stayed up, there's open windows, there's missing windows, there's. Abandoned cars behind it and so forth. Assuming that the town is turning over a new leaf in terms of supporting what it's committed to do. I would like to, whenever, and I have. Three or four times over the last four and a half years, asked the town. What's going on with that? And I've gotten a response like, we'll look into that. I'm hoping that's not typical of the response that the board is going to give me right now, but I'm going to ask one more time. Since we're going into the projects and so forth, and we're looking to see the town's commitment. What, if anything, has the town done about that?
Can we give a brief overview of what it takes for the town to demolish a building that the town considers unsafe in the process?
Well, there's, there's a, there's a procedure that's laid out in the town code for unsafe buildings and it's a due process. Procedure, you have to give notice, you have to file that notice also in the county clerk's office, like a notice of urgency. You have to have an opportunity for the, to actually hold a hearing. I mean, it's called a public hearing, but it's really a hearing that's designed to give the property owner the opportunity. To be heard and try to convince the board why the. Property shouldn't, why the property need not be demolished or, or, or otherwise secured. It becomes somewhat controversial because people seem to push back and let's say that you shouldn't do it, follow the process, but. They, they're, they're full on landmines, you have to follow the due process procedure very carefully, make sure you give all the required notices. Have the required hearing, otherwise you kind of wind up in a situation where you demolish the building and next thing you know, you end up getting sued for taking somebody's property without, you know.
Similar to what this town went through a couple of decades ago when they cleaned property and ended up in a multi-year lawsuit.
Could happen.
Yeah, I know the town.
But I know in others, I know in other towns that, and including other towns I represent. Where they've encountered that kind of difficulty, so you, I'm not telling you don't do it.
Right.
And, and plus of it is, if you do it right, you know, it can be a substantial expenditure of funds upfront. Because when you go to demolish the stuff, you gotta do it by competitive bidding, demolition isn't cheap. Sometimes these buildings that are especially the ones that are really collapsing into themselves, you can't do an asbestos. Analysis of them, so you have to assume they have asbestos and that ups the, the cost as well. But these are all the, all the processes that you have to go through in order to.
And I, I think the reason that I asked you to explain that is. One, it's more succinct and two, it makes the people understand that it's not a two-week process.
Yeah, you just don't, it's, it's not a, it's not a, okay, all in favor, I, let's take that building down. Process, that's for sure, you've gotta, you've, you've gotta go through the steps very carefully and very completely in order to get to that point. You can be, but if you do go through them all and you do take it down and you incur the expense, at least you do have the ability to levy that on your town. On to the tax bill and, and the town will get paid all even if they don't pay their taxes.
Thank you, I appreciate that and I've been bonged and I know he's paying his taxes, but, and I know the process, I knew the process. Was not going to be simple or quick. But. It's, the only way it could possibly be longer is if there's no starting point. So my question would be, when's, when's somebody gonna pull the trigger and starting it? If somebody looks at it and says, we can afford this or whatever, but doing nothing. I, you know, it's been almost five years. I appreciate somebody.
To be honest with you, I have not been quick to do it because. You'll have to do it as best as a baby because the roof isn't there.
So, well, it's a couple hundred yards from the playground. The town, you know, it's all part of the big picture here, it seems to me.
We can get some prices. It's probably gonna be. Fifty or a hundred thousand dollars.
Prices on determining a course of action?
No, prices on. An idea of what it's gonna cost demolition-wise, and then we. I'll talk to Jim, Jim's written the letters, he, they have sometimes responded.
Oh, they have?
Sometimes they have not, I don't think they've responded in a well over a year, if I'm correct.
All right, well, that's more information than I had and I'm thankful for that.
Oh, no, it's not. Been forgotten, but it's just, they're down in Jersey, Jim's up here. When he could get through to him, I. I believe that he contacted. An attorney that he believed represented them. But they did not have, that attorney did not, because he was formerly represented by Jeffrey Clemente. So they, they figured Fran would be able to have some sort of contact information for him. But I don't believe that she did.
Very well.
Any different to what he had?
Thank you. Keep us posted, please.
Michael, I wait with bated breath.
Oh, it's a quick technical question, it's actually. An Ed Norton question. With respect to the sewer rate. Does this require sewer metering? Or is it just a percentage of your water usage calculated out? Assuming that what goes in comes back out at some point. Is that, it doesn't require everybody having to get a. Separate installation. It's just based on waters.
Which we already knew.
That was the Ed Norton question.
See you at the lodge.
Hi, Ben. Um. I'm gonna just read this, I don't mess it up. So I'm having an issue with a new neighbor with a very loud. Audible alarm system and speaking system, not just an alarm actually voice. As well, I had thought to ask for noise ordinance or for the town to consider one. But upon reflection, given our campgrounds and our tourist attraction draw that supports our town, I've instead decided to ask the town to consider guidelines and regulations. In regards to video surveillance. And alarm systems that are audible, audible is the key word there, according to all my research. Many towns have such to protect the misuse of them and ensure their constituents' reasonable expectation of privacy. On their own property. This would benefit the entire tax base of voting constituents, locals and tourists. Our town is a desirable place to not only live and raise a family, but to visit for its tranquility and small-town country charm. A video surveillance ordinance to regulate surveillance and audible alarm systems would benefit the entire town. I have found. Through many encounters with state troopers and sheriffs. And court clerks and county court clerks. That, I live in the wrong town. Many of our local towns. Require permit to install an audible alarm system and surveillance to protect. Its constituents, ensuring that surveillance is their own property. And the audible portion is not disturbing the peace. Or. A reasonable expectation of privacy that both our local residents and our visitors. Should absolutely have, the alarm system is also. Quite confusing to our local fire departments. So I own. Nine properties in the town of Tuscon, but the one that I am really dealing with is my own personal home, which is outside of the town. I know from managing a local Airbnb right next to Durla Lumber. When her home alarm would go off. She had two chances and then the fire company find her. But I have nothing to protect me on Parker Road. And when I tell you this alarm, I live in the middle of Parker Road. And I can hear it at the cemetery. It goes off at one AM in the morning, two AM in the morning. And other, like seven months and the cops won't do anything. They actually advised me to get my own noise and alarms and. There's no laws being broken here because Tuscon doesn't have any.
That's true.
We do have noise or an order, law ordinance.
You don't, Mr. Crowley told me, yes, he got them to shut it off. For approximately three weeks. That noise ordinance is only in regards.
Code of the town of Tuscon, entitled alarm system. Includes, includes regulations and, and, and deals with also alarms as a matter of fact.
Only little fire alarm. It's a security. Crowley, I was so happy. I did, I went to the town, this was back in February and March. And they got it shut off for about three weeks until the woman went absolutely bonkers on. Crowley and they reversed it. Are a secondary item too, I'd like a local dog warden and catcher. Cause my neighbor harassing ours, making him quit, I think. On one with other things, but yeah. There's been numerous threats to shoot my cats and dogs and. It went to a. Yes, it went to a legal matter and eventually Nico just quit. Because we were, I was requesting like a documentation and he had to put in there that she had threatened to shoot them. It's become a town that I, I mean, I absolutely love, I have a lot of homes here, I have one on School Street as an Airbnb and. Honestly, I go there quite a bit just to get away from my neighbor. And I've lived here for eighteen years, there's got to be something you guys can do.
We've got posted down, I can talk to Jim.
Can I, when you say audible aspect, you mean a siren?
Yes.
Somebody in the back?
I can play it for you.
I think they understand it.
I don't think you do, I can't sleep.
I've got four minutes left in public comment, I'd like to give at least somebody else.
Very audible. I can send you a link. It also talks, calls me. At C U N T, she can speak through it as well. When I get out of my truck, tells me to. Move the trucks, it's too close to the property line. Calls my children names. It speaks every time my children play basketball in our driveway. It's totally legal in New York State to record minors, the video. Is my entire house. It's excessively concerning.
Yes. You look like Valerie, I see your glasses.
Thousand English, we'd all like to be.
So it's Jeff Allison, there's quite a few, Tuscon. Thanks. Hey. Um, it's just like a follow-up question I have and maybe I missed the meeting. But there was. Few meetings ago around the, you know, ongoing playground park. Development work. There was going to be a meeting among the committee, I think, to come up with guidelines and, and start to workshop that and have some work sessions around that. Just curious if anything. Came of that?
Yeah, we came up with some, some workshop stuff that needs to be still presented to the board.
Oh, so, so yeah, what's the process of sharing that with the public?
I don't see, you've, you've got, these other we can.
I did send it around to the board, but I don't think we discussed it, right?
Right, I made a final on it.
Right, right. We did.
Put it on for November and we can add it as an agenda item and that we can do a handout of it for the meeting so that people can see it.
Great, thank you.
Allison Norris, I live in the flats and. I just had a question about this playground. In two thousand and twenty, the population in Nansburg is. Three hundred and eighty-eight residents and the median age is forty-five. Who is this playground for?
This problem of public comment, we end up getting in a back and forth about this.
Wasn't that, this is about that?
No, public comment is usually we let people.
Okay, so maybe.
It's, it's for all, all of the residents of the town of Tuscon, all twelve hundred.
So twelve hundred in that area of flats?
The town of Tuscon.
Right, understood.
Yeah.
So the town of Tuscon could convene. In the area of the flats.
The park is owned and operated by the town of Tuscon, it is funded by the taxpayers of the town of Tuscon. So yes, any taxpayer. That lives in the town of Tuscon that wish to use or utilize that playground, yes, they could go down there and use it.
I understand that.
Okay, that's the answer to your question.
But I just want to know. The youth. That this is what it's for. What I understand are bathrooms, perhaps a kitchen, music. Stadium lights. I'm just putting it all out there on the record.
What is there?
Yeah.
Right now is a pavilion and there's been talk of the bathroom because of code. There's no. Music and concerts and stadium lights or any of that and it's been. It's been part of the board for the last three or four months that we've been discussing that. But somehow we still think that it's going to be stadium lights and concerts in a kitchen and those things have been debunked as not part of it. So, right now, that's not part of what it is.
But the bathroom is, correct?
The bathroom would need to be as a place of a public assembly, yes.
And. Who's paying for the maintenance of the bathroom?
The town of Tuscon would be.
So myself, is everyone?
Absolutely, yes. Now, your, your taxpayer dollars are right now used for that. Your taxpayer dollars have helped to fund the project at Lake Erie, whether you drive over it or not.
But I live in the flats because I like that it's quiet and I like that it's wildlife. And I like that there's only one lane in, one lane out. How does that, how does that, what does that look like with parking? Problems, vandalism? What does all of that look like? Right, I, I'm not asking you to answer that, it's just.
That's, that's.
But it's just, it needs to be heard, voiced, recorded.
That has been heard.
Well.
We've heard all of those things.
I know, you haven't heard mine.
And we're going to address some more things in the park project, I hear old business all starts, so there might be more stuff that you, you see that comes out.
Really needs to be thought out, maybe, you know. It can happen where you live, if that's really, you know, an area that, that I know, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, it starts. And then Mrs. Powell, I did.
I'm Star Hesse and I'm making a public comment and I put it in writing because. Public comments rarely have ever appear in the minutes of the meeting. And I have. Again, a list of recurring questions that have gone unanswered month after month. Meeting after meeting, and I'd like to have that, those questions included on. In the minutes of the meeting. First, the status of the LED lights on Main Street with six of them on all the time and one not working. Has NIPA or NICEG or whoever is responsible for this glitch? Given you a time when this is going to be fixed?
That I will answer because I know that you brought this up once before. We are still awaiting. From Verizon. A SIM card in order for them to communicate with the gate letter. I spoke with Verizon again on Friday. I spoke with Knife on Friday and I spoke with a contractor on Friday. Verizon was supposed to call me back. Friday afternoon and they did not, they had not called me back today, so I'll be back and inform them tomorrow.
Okay, then is there any way that the town can apply? To NICEG to get credit for the electricity that's being used on those lights that are on all the time?
I'm going to guess probably not because we own those lights. Not. Not NICEG.
So we're paying ourselves for them to be on all the time, is that what you're saying?
We're paying electricity for them to be on all the time, that is correct.
Okay, and we're paying who for the electricity?
NICEG.
All right, then, could we apply to NICEG and say that this is not something that we are creating?
Well, we own the lights.
Well, fine, but.
I can ask them, but we own the lights, it's kind of like if my outdoor light is on. Because my switch won't turn it off and they said they're not going to give me money back because. I didn't get them fixed, they're my lights, if there were NICEG's lights and they stayed on because they didn't fix them. Then NICEG could turn around and give us money back for something that they did not fix.
Okay, another question, there's a light in the parking lot out here in the library. That is a light, do you know who owns that or?
We don't, that's, the fire department has asked us that, so we're not sure who owns that.
And who's paying the bill for the electricity that that's running?
I, I do not know.
Okay, I think somebody really should find out.
Just help me for the library to find out or is it a part of their bill or no?
No, it's not, it's not the library's light, that's just there. Anyway, I was hoping that that would be a little bit something more that we could get some credit on, but as you say, we own them, so I guess we own the fact that they don't work.
We, we do, that's, yes.
Is there any news on the installation for the wifi system?
Yeah, we got a quote for nine hundred and thirty dollars a month. We brought this up last month at the meeting, the board would not approve that payment for the installing of the. Uh, we brought this up last month at the meeting. Um, the board would not approve that payment for the installing of the. Ability to.
So is another quote being sought to see?
We got one from, uh, Spectrum and it was higher.
So, and those are the only two options, Spectrum and whatever.
Those are the only two that provide us with. The ability for Wi-Fi or. In this area is Frontier or Spectrum.
Okay, um, I'm asking this more of a metaphorically because I'm sure there's not an answer to this either, but what is the status? Of the request for town to provide public access? To an ADA compliant public toilet on Main Street or elsewhere in accessible locations in the town? What is the status of that? Is anything being done to?
Yeah, we're considering putting one down in the park area if we put a pavilion in.
Well, it's kind of hard to understand, uh, why the town then. Would be putting down and be so insistent on having a toilet on the flats. That would serve a very limited number of people. Uh, when they completely adamantly oppose a public access toilet. In an area in the town which would, uh, serve a lot more people than just.
We're not putting a place of public assembly on Main Street.
Well, you don't have to have a place of public assembly to have a public toilet as a convenience where people.
Yeah, we tried that once and the board decided that they were not going to put one on.
That's what I'm saying. They're adamantly opposed to it here, but down on the flats where people don't want it. They want to put it in and that's going to be done.
Star, please don't, please don't reflect it. That way we have not taken a vote on the bathroom. There is no consensus on that. There is no clear message. I prefer not to be profiled with an opinion that I have not expressed.
Well, then I will use what Mr. Powell said about the fact that. If you don't have any kind of progress or working on something, then you do have a delay that just goes on ad infinitum, ad nauseam. Without any specific person being targeted as the responsible card. One more thing here, um, as far as the pavilion and building down there. How do you think you're going to be able to get, uh, insurance on that building? As it's designated as a front flood prone area?
We have everything insured down in that playground already for the playground equipment, so yes.
So that, that you build something that will be, and how much will that insurance cost?
I have not asked for a quote on that, but I could do that.
Okay, well, thank you very much and I would hope that some of the questions here that I've raised will be answered in the next meeting or before.
Last person, Mrs. Powell.
Am I allowed to comment on the playground or do I have to wait till after?
No, I'm going to open public comment back up after the, at the end of new business.
Okay, so.
Then you're up. You're all set.
I'll try to be as succinct as possible. This is about. The park and the flats. And there are some wants and needs that we need. The board and the town. Help to us with. What we need. Forgive my reading. One, what we need are more deciduous shade trees. To replace the trees. That were removed. Two. Shade sales. Would be appropriate. From. May through October. They are very sturdy. And they have some very interesting. Other people might have some thoughts about that. Three, several benches would be useful and helpful in the park. Four, we want the walking path to be completed. Five, we need the park to be maintained and kept clean. Six, one ADA quarter John would suffice. That's what we need. What we don't need is a pavilion, one. Two, we do not want a plumbed toilet. You had mentioned that the kitchen is now off the table, so I will not mention that. Three, we do not want. A stadium lighting at any time or after hours activities. And since you mentioned that is not necessarily. On the table, I just mentioned it so that it is noted. Additionally, we also feel that when anyone gets up to speak. Besides giving their name, Iris Hellfeld. And the name, to give the name of the town that they reside in and where they vote. Tustin, I don't care. Thank you.
We're going to go into old business and then we will open public comments again.
Abby, will you wait until it's been?
Um, yeah, it's okay. Hello, um, just kind of following up on Jill's thing about the policy and procedure for the park. Um, just a, a question, um, looks like you guys are planning a great Halloween party. Following Palooza, it looks like going to be, I think, I heard three hundred to five hundred people. Did you say that, Crystal?
Typically Halloween, whenever we have a Halloween event.
So one of my questions is when we make that policy and procedure. Manual, you know, like, is there going to be a capacity limit? On what we do in the park for events? Um, and I heard there's going to be a bonfire. Hopefully there's going to be safety around the bonfire. Um, streets are going to be closed. I'm just. Um, you know, just some questions about if we are looking at having events down there and I know you've done it before. But I don't recall there's been bonfires and five hundred people. Maybe I'm wrong. I don't know. So I'm just. Asking about the, um.
Especially with the kids, we talk well about the people in past years for Halloween events on the flats.
Okay.
In the past two years.
All right, so that you don't think that's going to be fun with parking or anything like that?
If, if, we did it in twenty twenty one and I was one of the volunteers and I don't recall any parking issues.
Okay, all right. It just seemed like a lot of, um, people, so, um, you know, I just want everybody to be safe. I want. And then, and it's going to go till seven o'clock. You don't know what time?
Are you the only one here from the youth?
Yeah. I'm not the only one who always hear the youth because I've always home with your children. Could you speak on, Crystal, please?
I asked Crystal if she was the only one here from the youth and she said, yes, she was. I've asked Crystal to only come to the meetings as a town clerk and not from the youth commission. Because it tends to aggravate people that are in the audience. However, she's the only person right now that has the information that can answer Patty's question and. It's a good question. Patty deserves an answer.
Speak a little louder so that we could hear. That's all.
And it's supposed to, the event is supposed to end around seven P M. Okay, nice, thank you.
So I would just assume and open a public comment after we get some of our business done. And the board would like to continue with public comments. Old business. Uh, four point one, the park project is on old business. Um, I did speak with the U D C. They're awaiting the submission of plans. Um, which have not been put back into them yet. Did the board wish further discussion on that at all? Do you have anything that you want to bring up? Other than where we're at right now, I, I, I see that we've got the, uh. The committee should bring forward to the board. The park policies and procedures that have been drafted up that the board could look at. Uh, I don't know whether they, you want to do a meeting with the committee and get them emailed to the board or just given.
Well, I see one thing we, I, I know right now we didn't put the capacity in there, so that's a good thing to add.
I was just wondering, since, you know, we obviously have. Dissension about the pavilion. We have received no bids for the pavilion. The pavilion has become a hot button. Might we lower the temperature a little bit if we put a moratorium on, on the pavilion? Project for six months and maybe until people in the flats come up with a. Coherent plan that's seen as something that's coming from the ground up as opposed to.
I'm just sort of throwing that out.
I would, I would like to at least continue with, uh. Putting into the U D C, the, the plan that we've got to see if they come up with anything because that's going to take. Two or three months just for them to.
Right.
Garnish approval for it. Um, I do know, I do know next month that the, uh, Sullivan one eighty would like to. Speak with the board at the board meeting. Um, to go over some of the concerns that they've been hearing from some of the people.
So. So these, these are moving forward with the U D C and with the Sullivan one eighty and, and to. Put a moratorium on that would mess those. Uh, yeah, so I just want to assure people. And the concerns I've heard is that this is not something that the board is doing quickly or trying to do behind your back. Obviously. It's pretty transparent. Um, I've been on the, first on the board, ready the most. Anti-pavilion, but I just want everyone to know. This is done by people who care about the town and are doing it in complete transparency. Um, and nothing's going to happen quickly or surreptitious. Um, I'd like to see it, I'd like to, the pavilion, you know. The wither away, but the process is happening and it's happening transparently. I, I just want.
Yeah, I would like to see the Sullivan one eighty come in, um, to speak with the board about this. Um, to speak with, answer any questions if the, if the public's got some questions that they would like to answer. Um, but no, it's not going to. At this point, much like I said to the last meeting, uh, even if we said, yep, absolutely, this is, we are. We're full steam ahead. Nobody's going to bid on this at this point in time of the year.
This is, but I think it is healthy that people on the flats are sort of forming a kind of. Uh, friends of the park committee or they can make them up with some ideas or a smaller footprint, something that's seen as. Uh, you know, again, from the ground up, from the community up as opposed to from the town down. I, you know, I'm just saying.
Yep.
That's all I'm saying.
Um, I've got nothing else in old business. Is there anything else? That we've got in our business?
Just that parking spaces opposite the old bank, we were going to.
Yes, I contacted the county. Um, they are going to, uh, strike the parking lot.
The whole parking lot?
Yeah, they're going to do, and, and I went over those particular spots all the way up to Captain Blood's driveway to do.
Okay, but those two, you know, that we wanted to turn.
They're going to be, yeah, there's going to be two handicap spots there, one bad accessible and one.
And, and they won't be perfectly legal anymore.
Correct, it'll be parallel.
Might we want to check? That out, you can get out of that. You know what I'm saying? The second spot? If someone's parked, you know.
They're going to, they're going to make, they have to be twenty feet each.
Okay.
I believe the handicaps may need to be larger.
Yeah.
Or at least wider, but a regular one needs to be twenty feet.
So that's moving ahead.
Yes.
Right.
I don't know if that's going to get, when it's going to get painted. They did not give me a date on that. Um, we're in old business. Budget workshop dates. We need to set a couple of budget workshop dates.
Wonderful time.
I'm sorry.
Could those please be on Mondays, boss?
Sure.
Thank you.
We've got. We need to do a public hearing for the budget. No later than the Thursday after Election Day, which is the ninth. So I would like to, our. Normal budget, our normal workshop for the, uh. Town board would be the seventh election day. So we can move that to the sixth, which is on Monday for the public hearing. And then that way we could take what we get from the public hearing, if anything, and incorporate it at the following week's meeting. Which is so we can digest anything that may come up with the public hearing. That leaves us with the sixteenth, twenty third and thirtieth for. Workshops.
About to.
I'm sorry, of, uh, October.
October. You need to make sure that you adopt the preliminary budget. Prior to and advance of that public hearing date so that Crystal can get the notice published with the requisite information including the specific salary information.
And you have to have them. By what day? Usually a week ahead of time, right?
Yes.
So if you want to be published by the first of November. We really need to get that to the twenty fifth, which is a Wednesday before that first.
So, yeah.
So the sixteenth and twenty fifth.
Could we move that to the seventeenth? I didn't, I didn't.
I want to be here.
That, I'm good on any of those dates.
Seventeenth is fine with me.
And I think we can do it. In, in one, if not two.
Do you want to hold the ten, ten eighteen next day for?
How about the six, what happened with the sixteen?
That we were talking sooner than I realized.
He's going to be in the palace.
How about the twelfth?
January, you're on the seventeenth?
What?
Seventeenth? Let's figure the seventeenth out first and we'll pick another day.
I could do seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
But what, what, what time do you want to do the seventeenth?
Whenever you need to.
I can do the seventeenth. I think I have something at noon, so we'll do it in the morning. I do have something at noon.
The seventeenth, if you're doing it here, the G M B is here from ten to three. So you only have half the room or?
We only need half the room.
Yeah, we'll be quiet.
Well, we have C A C and we do.
Yeah, we've done zoning like that. That's fine.
So the seventeenth at?
Ten A M.
Okay.
And you posted on the website tonight since we're going to need the.
Mm-hmm.
Five days. And what do you want for a second, second time?
Yeah, again, I can do the eighteenth, nineteenth or twentieth.
You said at ten A M, right?
On the seventeenth, yeah.
I have ten, ten plans, but I don't have to keep them.
For all those dates? For all those dates?
The eighteenth and nineteenth.
Do I do ten, twenty? Friday?
We can do eighteen. We can do eighteen. That's fine. Eighteen at ten?
Will be eighteenth to ten is the second.
And can we adopt a preliminary budget of the budget workshop? Well, this is a duly noticed meeting.
Okay. Um, should we do the eighteenth later for Bruce's schedule?
We have a good program down here from. Late clock until six P M and then we have Friday six to two.
So.
And the town that will be there.
Those to the seventeen, eighteen, ten A M. Public hearing for the budget. Do you want to do Monday, the sixth, the day before Election Day?
I want to go to the third and, when Halloween, the thirtieth or thirty first?
That will.
That's the date of Friday.
I don't know that the thirtieth is going to give us enough time to meet the requirements of legally published. We're in a minimum of five days.
Five days before the hearing and, and you're not publishing in a daily paper, so you got to count. You know, based on what the publication.
So the sixth, you're telling?
I'm saying, yeah, the sixth would be the.
I think, what time? There's a water meeting in the morning?
Yeah, that's got to be in the evening though, since it's a public hearing. Six thirty, six thirty should be good. Yeah, because that's normal, normal kind of regular meetings.
Are you going to have any work session as well? Public hearing and work session and public hearing?
Let's do a public hearing and a work session because that way if we've got anything we need to change, we can do it after the public hearing. When we have it presented for. The regular meeting on the fourteenth.
So this is the same?
Yes.
And.
Six thirty, six thirty. Uh, we'll start the public hearing to be followed by the work session.
And you made that one resolution, set those dates?
I just made that resolution. We're going to set the work sessions on October seventeenth to ten A M, October eighteenth to ten A M. In a public hearing. The sixth of November for the budget at six thirty P M to be. The sixth of November for the budget at six thirty P M to be followed by the work session.
In second?
Second.
All in favor?
I opposed.
Can we do that same public hearing with the same way?
I don't know if I've got that much kevlar. Um, I was thinking we could move the sewer, do you want to do the sewer? In December? If the work session? If that look like it. That would be the fifth of December? I mean, we can do both on, on the sixth if we want of November, that's up to the board.
I, I think that's too much. That's a lot. I mean, the budget's a big thing.
So you're doing the six thirty on the?
December fifth.
December fifth. Public hearing for the sewer rate. I would make that a motion that we hold the public hearing for the proposed sewer rate change for December the fifth at six thirty P M.
A second.
All in favor?
I opposed.
Okay, five point four, um. Make a motion to authorize Crystal to seek grant funding uh for the. Tustin youth, and this is funding to reimburse the town for expenses.
Is that the usual? I'll second that.
All in favor?
I opposed.
Uh, advertise for dog control officer, a motion to authorize a town clerk to advertise for the position of the animal control. Dog control officer.
I'll make that motion.
I will second, all in favor?
I.
Opposed. We have received the resignation of Corey Dexter from his position of heavy machinery equipment operator effective the nineteenth of October. I will make a motion to accept the resignation of Corey Dexter. A second?
I'll say.
All in favor? I. He's not coming back if you say.
No, it's just so disappointing, I.
And a second motion. To advertise for the highway position that has been vacated, authorize town clerk to advertise a highway H M E O position.
Yeah, well, second.
All in favor? I opposed. Five point eight are winter road restrictions. Um, I will make a motion. We post our winter road restriction for snow and ice removal. As written in five point eight, I'm gonna have to read all of them. It will be from uh the overnight parking on Main Street from eleven to six AM from November fifteenth. Through April twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-four to Estella State. Snow removal, and then there's the Little Lake area restrictions and the winter weight restrictions as. Determined by the town of Tuscan Highway Superintendent.
The Little Lake area restrictions do not restrict.
Uh, ice fishing.
Ice fish, good, cuz I think there's no reason to. And this.
Hard to ice fish when you can't draw holes.
Could we not have the sign? Last winter was so negative, I mean, it starts with a big no. It just makes, it's so like, you know, ooh, the town boards says no, it was, it was too much. I, I'll help you grab something or.
Oh, that's something, yes.
That's like, um, keep going.
Um, do I have a motion for the winter road restriction?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed. Halloween curfew, uh, a motion to place Halloween curfew. As presented in five point nine. From the hour of nine P M October thirtieth. Through six AM on October thirty-first and nine o'clock on October thirty-first P M through six AM November first. A motion to, I'll, I'll move that, thank you, second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I opposed. Um, change cancel work session, we have taken care of that. Executive session that I spoke to you earlier, should we just do that as an executive session that way? Probably quicker.
Okay.
Yeah. I am going to open up. Published comments, we are going to. Enter into an executive session for the purpose of. A possible sale or acquisition of property. But before I do that, I will open up the public comments, let's start with Zoom this time, Crystal, because you've got people that may have not. gotten in the first round.
No one is raising their hands.
This is panel.
Are you here to be with the blast squad?
I'm sorry. Yes, we can, I'm sorry, I didn't mean.
I just don't wanna.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
Uh, the, um, there's a group of people in the flats meeting regarding the pavilion. Uh, I don't know if we have a name yet, but. Anyway, um, we do have two ideas to, uh, as alternates to a pavilion, and one is the sale. And that is S A I L, and that is, uh, that you take that down in the winter and. Yes, it is certainly not as sturdy or permanent as a pavilion, but. You have to buy ten sales, that doesn't even approach the cost of a pavilion. Uh, the other idea we have, um, is to plant trees. I have a dendrologist friend who recommended. Fast growing deciduous trees. Uh, I gave the list to Mike, but if you ever want to know what is recommended by a tree expert. We have a list. Um, how can I get a copy of the grant application? For the money, for the, uh, for the playground?
Uh, foil request will be the easiest way. And it's, the reason I say that's the easiest way, because if anybody comes up and asks, you want some, I will just send it to you. Well, then the next person, we have to do the same thing too, and the next person, and we do have some people that boil multiple things, so it's just easier to. Use the same process for everybody, and it's not a hard process, it's just a, there's a sheet upstairs you can fill out.
Okay, thank you. Um. Is it possible, I know that the board, maybe a few other people, I don't know, did go down to the flats to look at the site where the pavilion is proposed? Is it possible to put stakes in so that the rest of the public can see where the site is proposed? I would, I personally would appreciate that.
There was some talk of chalk.
Either that or we can, I'm sure somebody can paint it, you know, just paint a color, that way nobody's pulling the stakes up and throwing it away.
Okay.
Kids decide they wanna play, you know. Reindeer games are posted.
Um, the planting on Kirk's Road from the. Railroad that down on that slope. Um, I was told that that is supposed to be a meadow. I don't know if anybody knows that meadows are supposed to be mowed once a year. In the fall, after all the wildflowers have had a chance to scatter their seeds. Is there any plan to mow those grasses there or whatever it is?
The Kirk Road, it, did, uh. The landscape architect talked about that being mowed at the end of the year? Does it need to be mowed?
I, I don't think we discussed it at all.
Cuz that's what she's asking, some of the meadows, some meadows get mowed down from scattering in the seeds.
Um. We didn't discuss it at all, I don't know. So I guess we should.
Um, well, if you. I would appreciate somebody on the board. Verifying what I have said. I was told that in a botany walk run by the head of the botany department. At a university in New Jersey, and there are several meadows where I lived, where we lived. And they all got mowed of refill. After the seeds had dropped. Um, and then. Um, I am, um. Risking actually, uh. Invoking some animosity from the board. But I have questions. About projects that have gone on in the town. Um, there was a horseshoe pit. On the flats playground. That was part of the multi-generational aspect. For the park. And that was supposed to be for adults. You can't even find a trace of that anymore. The horseshoes were stolen like almost right away. Um. And then, of course, the famous sidewalk to nowhere in the flats, which has not been. It's not even, the whole project isn't even half done. That's supposed to be two sidewalks, so you can walk around and that's a mile. Not only is it not done, but it's almost overgrown, it's very hard to even see. At the same time that sidewalk was started, planters were put up. At the road edges, which are lovely, and the first year they were beautiful with flowers. And ever since then, they have been weeds. I don't understand why these things are not kept up. When you. Do something, you should. Make a plan to maintain these things. And so in light of all those things that I have said. Why should I trust the board? To keep up a pavilion? Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes.
Uh, Naomi Hallack, I live in the flats. Uh, I have two questions. One has to do with the Halloween party, and I was wondering what has.
Nothing.
What has been planned for cleanup after the Halloween party, given that? We have some. Bears around with a certain appetite in particular.
Uh, I'm assuming that the cleanup would be done that night, because that's every event that they've had, that the youth have been involved to. They have somebody actually emptying all the garbages and take everything away.
So there's somebody specific coming to take care of that?
It's never been a problem in the past, no.
Every time that, that the Tuscan youth has had an event down there anywhere else. We clean up, we, the moms stay there till ten, eleven, twelve, and we clean up the field by ourselves.
Good, okay, thank you. And my other question has to do with the plan that you're submitting or have submitted or will submit to the U D C. And Sullivan one eighty for the pavilion. Um, I'm not sure at this point how much of, what plan is being submitted. I know that we were back at a twenty-four by thirty building, I believe.
That is the one that would be submitted, yes.
On a concrete pad?
That is correct.
With a bathroom, a plum bathroom?
There's, I have no plans for a bathroom that I can submit, so I can only submit. That. To put it through to see if there, if there's any issues with it.
But wouldn't there be, wouldn't they wanna know about a plum bathroom?
I'm not gonna spend eight thousand dollars to get the plans for a plum bathroom if it's not going to.
Well, I don't know that it would need a plan, I mean.
Absolutely it needs a plan, today before the U D C.
So, I'm a little confused.
I need, wh- when you go before the U D C, you have to have the same as when you go to the building department. So when we went to the building department with the first set of plans. The large one. And then. That got shot down, we had to get another set of plans to put before the building department in order to get a building permit. That's what they need, they need the same thing that would be in the, in the, uh, spot. That the, another same thing we're gonna get, we would have to give to the building department.
Okay, I, I mean, I, I'm just thinking that, uh, the whole idea of plumbing and water lines and, and.
If, if a bathroom is going to be put up there.
Yeah.
And the board said, okay, we're gonna do a bathroom, then that building would then have to go also to the U D C for approval. If, the reason I'm asking the board to allow me to put this to the U D C is to see if we're going to have any issues. It, you know, if it goes through with no issues, then good, we can, we can keep the conversation alive. Down in the. Um, in the rest of the town, if an issue pops up, at least we know what it is, and we've got six months to deal with it, to find out. But, um, you know, a- at this point, we don't have any consensus for a bathroom between the board. So I'm not gonna spend eight thousand dollars to get plans that I can.
No, I, I would, you know, not, I was certainly.
So that's why there's only, I'm only going to them with the pavilion.
Okay.
And may I add one thing to that, Ben, just for, um, clarity's sake, the U D C's. Decision on these plans is in no way binding.
I understand that.
And I'm, I'm, I'm talking to everyone.
Well, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
I, I have one, I have two concerns. One main concern is I don't think that we have ever had a grandiose bonfire in. The flats park. My concern is that not one fire hydrant is accessible. I have been told that if any. Hose is attached. To a hydrant. It can. Break, destroy the piping that goes to it. So I am assuming that pumper trucks will be there. I am not opposed to having trunk or treat, I am not opposed to having an event for the children. I am concerned about a large bonfire in an area. That could become really problematic, especially without having any. Fire hydrants that are usable and accessible.
Dave's gonna be there.
Kelly is, is also online, who might courtesy, she's here.
Could you speak out loud, please?
Kelly is also here from the youth board, so one of the concerns, that is a concern, we always look at safety for the kids, cuz it's all about the youth. So we did put that out there, so it's with the mail out, we have spoken with Dave Casey from the fire department, because we always ask them. Um, both the fire department and the ambulance participate in a trunk or treat. However, we always have them there also for safety reasons, and the fire department, did you learning how to unheat it off that cow? The fire department did say that they will be there to maintain a campfire of sorts. It's not going to be a bonfire that fills this room in any capacity. We were actually looking at the space for the, the, um.
Somewhere where the stand and logging day.
Thing was standing, um, thank you, where the garden was standing, cuz there's no grass there, but you don't want it on top of the road either, because there's woods there. But this way, the, that fire trucks will be able to right next to it, so that is something that's already been.
Talking about that. So in conjunction with that. With that many people, and I know that trunk or treat is on grounds of the park. But with so many people, three to five hundred, which is what the Facebook. States. How can there be a clear path? For an emergency vehicle? Whether it's a fire truck or whether it's an ambulance could come down, is somebody making sure that there's going to be. Totally clear access?
Every year that we have done it down there, I personally make sure I back the fire truck that I draw. Vanessa can attest to this, anyone that comes to the trunk or treats, we draw a whole. Picture of the field and let everyone know where they're parking, the fire truck and the ambulance, I speak to them personally and make sure they have, they back in. And no one blocks in front of them, so that if they have to leave for another call or to leave because they have to do something with us and go. They always have access to get out, that is our number one concern with all of our events. So yes, I, we always make sure they are there and they can get in and out.
Has the laundry been informed about this so that they don't have any parking on both sides, so that there can be clear access for vehicles?
That has not been done yet, but I do appreciate that thought, and we will definitely give them a call up and up.
Okay.
So thank you.
Last. I wanted to know if anybody knows, there are two posi- voting, there are two positions that will be open. I wanted to know with Bruce's position, is that a separate position or? On the ballot, will it, do you know if it will be two vacant positions and three people running? Is it going to be? The two highest numbers? Or is Bruce's position a separate position and the one that Jane is vacating, is that the other two? Candidates would be vying for that position?
The ballot that I saw printed is two positions are open, three candidates, two highest. Take the positions.
But that's not what I'm saying, what about Bruce's position?
Two positions open. Three, three people are running for it, the two highest vote getters occupy those positions.
So that he's not guaranteed?
No, correct. The, the, the only thing, if, if the last time there was a two years, you know, there were. There were two, four year season, then there was a two year, two year vacancies, that's why there was a distinction. But I'm saying this year, there's no distinction, it's, it's, it's two seats, three candidates, may the best two. The candidate win, you know what I'm saying?
Okay.
Vanessa?
Are you allowed to speak twice? That's a totally different subject.
Yeah.
Do I have to go up there?
Oh, yeah, come on up. Irish House.
Okay.
Reasons not.
Thank you.
I'm not setting everyone. Why not continue? Vanessa, reduce Tuscan. I vote here. I really need to get out more because most fun I've had in a long time.
You really do.
I stay home all the time. I have a staff of thirty-five and one stays home at my house all the time, so my pets are never like allowed out. Like I guard the doors at all time, but anyway. Um. Well, that's the first sentence I wrote. I stay in a shell and work mostly. Um, I really hadn't heard about this park thing before today. Um, I am willing as Reeve Mountain Cleaning to offer two days a week. Um, cleaning, preferably Tuesdays and Fridays will work for me, any day that's not Monday or Sunday. Um, I carry full workman's comp and liability. I fully would endorse cleaning this public bathroom if it ever gets built, so. Um. I'd offer this for no less than seven years. Except for my twins graduate college or the duration of my company, if I decide to stay a business longer. I raised my children here and often traveled to Circle Park in Glens Bay. I mean, a lot of you are older. I don't know if you've been there. Uh, Bernie's been there. His, uh, grandson had a birthday party there. I attended it. Literally as a town of Tuscan resident, I would go to Circle Park or like. And pay to rent a pavilion with a bathroom to have a birthday party when I can't do it in my own town. Um, I also served, they also have like movie nights with a little thing. We went there for that. They put up a projector, but anyway. There's so many things you could do with a pavilion and with bathrooms. Bathrooms are amazing. Um, and youths. I served for many years on the Tuscan Youth and I wholeheartedly am pleased by the idea. Um, as many families could only, when we arranged trips. We would arrange these great trips to Great Wolf and to, uh, Crystal Ice Festivals. Hours and hours went into these trips, but there are. Um, at the time I was in Tuscan Youth, there were ninety-two families that participated in our local food pantry. And their families. And if you can't afford to buy food for your children, you cannot afford to pay for gas. You can't take these kids to these events. So events held in our town, right here where people can travel with their children. Amazing. Anything our town can do to promote that should absolutely be done. Um. I also have an amazing husband. I texted him. I asked the young lady sitting next to me. Twenty-two by, I think, thirty. He said approximately twenty, he hasn't seen the plans. Twenty-five to forty-five K, Reeves Mountain Construction would be happy. Happy to absolutely provide that pavilion free of charge. Tell me how, tell me when, throw up the plans. If it's twenty-two by thirty with a concrete floor and a roof, done. Um. No cost to the town. I donate heavily to the school system. My girls are graduating this year, so I can tone that down. Um. I have no problem providing that for the town. I think bathrooms are great. I think the pavilion is great. Think somehow if more people knew about this, they would be on board. Um. And other contractors too. I'm certain my husband, I texted him and he said yes right away. Um. I mean, the bid would be forty-five K to you, but the actual cost to us is about twenty K. Um, I wouldn't be able to donate to anyone else, but I live here. I raise my kids here. I hope my children, one of them at least, comes back and raises their kids here. So. That's my thought on the park and the bathroom, and I'm coming back next month because this is great.
Yes.
It just would never do one more thing about the meadow. If you don't mow a meadow every year. Then it reverts back to what nature would do, which is small trees and then larger trees and then shrubs and it's no longer a meadow. It has to be mowed so that the, uh, trees and other plants that are not normally in the meadow don't grow. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Sue and I live in Tuscan and I vote here.
I, I got one more on the floor. Come on up, Beth.
My name is Kathleen Hector. Most of you know me. At the September twelfth board meeting, I requested two items. Number one, the removal of tall decorative grass that is obstructing the no parking sign by the laundrette, uh, pizza shop. Public safety requires your action. And. To date, nothing's been done.
Yeah, um, to address that, I, I had the board actually ask me. I remember when the planning board asked for those signs to be put up and they were put up by the previous owner. They are not signs that were put up by the town. The town does not have a no parking ordinance on that particular street on Fifth. So they put it up because one of the things that the board, the planning board wanted was for them not to allow the people to park there. They said you have to keep the. The. Street open. So they, they put those up in an effort to have people not park there.
But now they've just discarded that idea with the shrubs growing with the.
I don't know if Don, to be honest with you, I don't know if Don has talked to them to say. Take down the, you know, cut the, uh, grass out so that they can see. Hey, I don't know that he has done that.
Because if there ever was an emergency on the flats and the fire trucks had to go back and forth and all those cars there. Especially from around third, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday through the weekend. Could be a dangerous situation.
If, if we had a parking ordinance on Fifth, then he would be within his rights to go. To where the signs were and actually put it down, but for him to go on the property and cut that down. They might not have a problem with it, but.
So who did you speak to? You said you spoke to somebody.
No, no, I need to, I don't know if Don has spoken to them.
Don is, oh, Don, Don Iger, okay. And, um. I requested information about the cost of the, uh.
Right, and I think that's the same thing that who asked about the Patty.
Yes.
Patty Sue, somebody.
So you're going to tell me that I need a, a FOIA?
Yes, you've missed the meetings where we have people foil things and if, if we allowed somebody to just come up and say, okay, we're going to give it to you. Then they're going to come up and say, oh, by the way, I want the last six months of this and I want this and, oh, you did it for Mrs. Hector. Why aren't you doing it for us?
Okay.
So it's just, it's, it's an unfortunate.
Okay, well, where can I get the FOIA forms?
Uh, we've got them upstairs.
You have some, we have some in the hallway upstairs.
Are they online at all?
I believe they're online also.
And then, uh, aside, uh, something I mentioned the last time too. Uh, you know, we're, talk about, um, a public bathroom. Um. Especially on Main Street. Uh, the Delaware Valley Arts Alliance has a. Very large building there. Uh, it might be an idea to, um. Perhaps ask them if they will make a bathroom accessible to the public, which would be on a ground floor. Uh, they would be doing a tremendous service for the town, uh, and for the visitors. And, um, once again, I'd like to just remind the board that Delaware Va- Valley Arts Alliance is a. Three-story building, which, uh. Is very advantageous to them and to the town, should there be a need for, uh, more space, uh.
More space.
More, more space for, uh, well, you, you have them upstairs using the movie theater. And, uh. You know. They might be able to put something in their own building rather than rent it from the town. The space up here, that's, that was my point. Okay, all right. Thank you very much. And, oh, just one other thing. Uh, I, I did send a letter to the Tuscan Town Board. Um, was this put in your boxes?
Yes, there was email from them the day we received it.
Excuse me?
They received it via email the day that we received it in the office.
You sent me an email?
I sent them an email. When I receive correspondence for the town board, I scan in emails to all of them.
Uh huh, okay, but, um, I got, I got no reply from anybody. Is that normal that? There's, there's no replies when someone sends a letter? Is that normal?
Often happens. Uh, yeah, it does. I, I'm sorry. I thought you actually. Sent something to her because we had a discussion and I didn't follow up with you.
Can, can you answer that?
Yes, I, I thought that somebody had answered you.
Thought someone had, you know.
Because we can't do an email, we cannot do an email chain amongst the board members. So I can't have an email that has two people in the board, because that's a violation of the open meetings law. So I was under the impression that one of the board members had gotten back to you. I just told that board member that I didn't follow up, so it's my fault for not following up with him. To make sure that you had got an answer.
Yeah. Okay, it, it's nice to know that when you write a letter to the town board, that at least they acknowledge. Uh, you, you know, okay, thank you. Ten seconds. Please. I keep forgetting to mention that the corner of Erie Avenue and Bridge Street. If you are making a left turn out of Erie Avenue onto Bridge Street, you cannot see. Anybody that's coming and that light, that intersection is so dangerous. People go through it. There's so much overgrowth in that area. It needs to be addressed. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think that there's only seven seconds.
Is it overgrowth or the angle of the hill?
I think she was talking about the railroad property with the trees coming up. There'll be a call about a railroad, see if they can come do some trimming. Anybody else before we move into the executive session for the.
Okay, I just wanted to, there were some questions for Tuscan Youth that Crystal couldn't answer about the time. Um, so we advertised four to seven because we have a DJ hired for the kids from four to seven. And then at seven o'clock, um. Don't be alarmed by the word fire show. There's, it's hard to find the right word for it. It's an individual and his son. And they're performers and they have like the batons that lay on the ends and they call a circus, uh, fire show. We had them at Fourth of July. Um, so he'll start at seven o'clock and that's a half an hour show. So, um. After that is really, nothing else is on the schedule, so people will likely start dissipating. But I just didn't want it to seem like at seven, everything was shutting down. Um, just for comparison, in twenty nineteen, um, a lot of you were there. It was our largest event down on the flats. We worked with the Beach Lake Methodist Church for Halloween and there were over a thousand people that night on the field. Um, and we didn't have any issues. And that night, Crystal and I were the very last two to leave the field. We picked up all the garbage. Um, did sweeps of the field and we walked off at ten. So just to give you an idea, and this shouldn't be big of an event as that was, but so there will still be people on the field after seven. I just wanted to make sure. You know, we told you that.
Anybody else on Zoom?
No. We also have lights.
A motion. To enter an executive session for the purposes of the acquisition or disposition of real property. Favor? Thank you, folks.